Good evening. It is Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P. M. This is the time and place for the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. I now call this meeting to order. Director Klein.
You please join me in a flag salute?
Great, thank you. Mrs. Martin, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Bucks?
Here.
England? Fowler? Williams?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Um?
Present.
Directors, England and Fowler, Absen, all other members are present.
Great, thank you. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Next item on the agenda is adoption of tonight's agenda. Everyone's had an opportunity to to look it over. It has been posted publicly. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, please indicate with a yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to item three. This is the presentations. The high school student of the month for February, students of the month for February are Mackenzie Hess and Casey Weaver. Neither one of them are here, but this award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The middle school student of the month for February is Roxette Louderman. Roxette's also not here, but this award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and she will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Student Board Representative is Alex Selby. We understand that Alex is sick this evening, so we'll wish him the best and and quick recovery, which then takes us to Mrs. Bruce for a quick update.
Hi, everybody. I will keep this very brief. Gary's been talking to us a lot at Leadership about our long-range plan and just about the goals and kind of keeping focused on how we're making progress, and I want to give you a quick update. Number four goal in the long-range plan is really about building mutually beneficial relationships in the community. And we got approached by the Lancaster Barnstormers probably shortly after Christmas this year, and we are partnering with the Lancaster Barnstormers this year to do a N. L. Takeover the Barnstormers Night. And so I actually have Megan Tavani, who is our middle school counselor, is going to be helping kind of chair this event. So she's going to be back at probably one of the March board meetings to give you a full presentation of all what's going to happen. But I thought as people start making summer plans, I'll give you a little quick save the date because we'd like to have as much participation as possible. And I don't want to steal Megan's thunder, but one thing they are going to do is they're going to give a free ticket to every single student and staff member for the Barnstormers. So it should be a really fun partnership night, should be a good, you know, everybody together celebrating kickoff of summer. Really fun and a good way for us to kind of get out with our kids and and enjoy the staff together. So I'm going to give you guys these, and then that's, I just want to give you a quick update, and Megan will be back in March.
Thank you. What's the date?
June third.
June third. Great, thank you.
She's got cards with a calendar and a date marked for everybody. And I I will say that it it, Megan, I don't, again, I don't want to say too much, but
Thank you.
It's, they let you do pretty much everything. We, National Anthem and ushering, and I mean, we can literally take over except for the playing on the field. So, man.
What about bullpen?
We can bullpen catch, yeah, we could probably do that.
Good, thank you. Next presentation, we do have a presentation from Fidavia. Dan?
Yeah, and and come on up, Dan. While Dan's coming, it was a February meeting. We were talking about, I think Director Klein brought it up, about the importance of, as we're planning our renovation, that budget number and staying within it, and, you know, some of the change order things that had occurred over at the other. And he is doing a fantastic job of keeping us us on track, and if you would just talk a little bit about how we're gonna, how you're guaranteeing the number to the dollar for the renovation, that would be fantastic.
Happy Valentine's Day. So just a few brief words of reassurance and commitment. It's been, it's made very evident and clear to us that forty is the magic number for this project. There's been a lot of wrestling going on behind the scenes right now. With the scope of the project, you know, we're really in the very early stages of putting the project together. You know, with the design team, of course, is the lead in terms of what is the scope that's in the project? Because forty is the magic number, and that's an all-in number. Hard cost and soft cost. For the previous two projects, we really just did some high-line estimating. We'll be doing detailed estimating on this project, and we pretty, we really have a good tracker, track record with detailed estimating. It really is, I think, as good as you're going to get. I also made a promise to Leanne, I guess, about whenever it was, six months ago, whenever we first started started talking about it, that we would stay within the numbers. So I'll probably keep reiterating that to to the bid day, and you'll probably keep calling me back here to talk about it because we did make the commitment. If it's any consolation as well, we have a pretty nasty renovation in Harrisburg for an existing, excuse me, an existing elementary school. It's also the same architect coincidentally involved, and we did a detailed estimate. That project's being awarded tonight. And on a twenty-some-odd million-dollar job, we're about forty-five thousand dollars off the number. So we we expect to hit the number, and we're going to do everything we can at this stage before we advance the project for. That's really, that's that's kind of a really important thing. It's not just hitting the number, it's hitting the number at every phase. It's like anything else. If you aim at nothing, you're sure to hit it. And by the constant, there's multiple people in this room reiterating tonight, reiterating the forty as an overall number. So we're just going to keep at it, at it until we get close. So we'll probably do a detailed estimate in in detail, probably in probably a couple of months from now. And it would be two, three months would be an appropriate juncture to come back to you and and discuss, you know, where we are with it, you know, which should be, we're still on target with what we've been talking about. That, just so, just to give you an idea, that detailed estimate, we normally, not only will we take off the project in detail as far as the nuts and bolts of the project and reassess all the soft costs involved, we'll put in appropriate value for construction, contingency, change orders, and and market contingency as well. So I'm happy to field any questions. That's kind of the the quick high-line picture of where we are and where we intend to stay.
I I just, Dan, contingency fund, we've talked about this a little bit, but I I know that when we get approached with change orders, there's this feeling that it's over and above that bid, that the contingency fund is part of the bid number. Correct? And and just if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. As I mentioned, when I come back with the estimate in two, three months, that contingency, there's actually two contingencies that'll be, or three. There'll be a market contingency, but then we'll have a construction and a design contingency, because the project in two, three months obviously won't be one hundred percent designed at that point. It'll be probably at that point about fifty, sixty, something like that. So there'll be a contingency value for the portion of the project that's, it's not on paper yet, that will kind of, you know, ballpark, and then there'll also be construction contingency, which will be commensurate with doing a renovation. And frankly, when you do a renovation, you really should have a a higher contingency because you're working in an existing building, you know, theoretically, not theoretically, in practice, new construction should be less than renovation in terms of change orders, because it's all new. It's just on paper. Your issues on a new construction are usually in the ground where you can't totally liquidate that value.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Okay. And we'll work with you to get something on the calendar.
Yeah, and I, and they'll, we'll probably have Crabtree here next month to give an update on the design and everything else. So I know we started, we started with a particular. We had those four proposals, so we started with a particular proposal, as you guys have seen. And we've worked through that, and we've made some adjustments. We're about forty-one, we started about forty-six, we're about forty-one, seven at this point with a few things to to look into yet. So we're whittling away without losing function, which is good, and we'll keep doing so. But I saw a picture today, I believe it came, and was very excited about what I saw. So we'll get Crabtree here to do an update for you next month.
Great.
Have a good night. Hey, I got, I got a question real quick. Maybe you'll touch on it later, but since you're here. I know you mentioned last month that there was a date in February that would be a good indicator whether or not we're on track. Yeah.
I can talk about it.
Okay.
I'll talk about it.
Okay, and I got one other question for you. Is, are liquidated damages commonplace for construction contracts?
Yeah, almost universally. I don't want to take away any Brooks thunder, but I love liquidated damages, but I, we, we in nineteen years, twenty years in June of doing this, as Fidavia, we've never once assessed them. And that's really more reflection of hitting schedules. I know things are a little, things are a little out of joint, you know, post-COVID, COVID and post-COVID, but with supply chain, but um, I mean, to you, the quick and easy answer is, I don't think we've ever had a contract where we didn't have liquidated damages in them.
Are they in this current contract?
Pardon me?
Are they in the current?
Should be, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be happy to talk about it more. You like, are you a fan of liquidated damages?
I just think that's a little skin in the game for other people to complete things on time, that's all. I just wanted to find out how.
We shouldn't have to rely on the liquidated damages to coerce what needs to be done. So if there's an issue, frankly, with the schedule, that falls back on us from a responsibility standpoint. And we shouldn't have to rely on what's in the contract documents. So that that's another conversation. Like I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to create more, more talk time for you with me here about it, but like, there's tons of things in the contract documents that we can rely upon as, as, we call it leverage, call it, you know, enforcing kind of clauses to to coerce or enforce performance. To the extent that there's any concerns, they come back to us, and we have to be responsive to that. And I'll never come back to you and say, oh, well, we've got liquidated damage, damages in the contract, and we're going to use that as a stick against the contractors. We should, we should be in a position to coerce performance regardless of what's in the documents. I'm not a big bonus fan either. Some owners like to talk about, you know, liquidated damages or penalties. Penalties, they're not technically penalties. They're supposed to be a liquidated value where you can't actually calculate damages and liquidated damages. If you call them a penalty, they're not enforceable by law. But that's on one side of the stick. The other side of the stick is you can give a bonus to a contractor for finishing on time, and same kind of thing. We don't like giving bonuses either. You just, just do your job.
All right, thank you.
That was more than yes for us.
And since we're on the topic, I'll piggyback it because of the project over there. The one thing you can't do is if, if it's a supply issue, your hands are tied a little bit more, like, because some of the problems we have over there are the electrical panels that just aren't coming. Having said that, in terms of an update, and I I do believe if if we get weather like this in March at the committee meeting, potentially, we could maybe do a little trip over there if you guys are interested.
We would love that. We'd love giving tours if you.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it's, you know, there's rooms that are painted and, you know, things, I mean, it's, it's really coming along. They are, Brad will do a better job of this, and and I, and while I'm on that subject, I also want to say, you know, we had a meeting today, and Fidavia and Crabtree are all over the schedule. I mean, they are, they're talking, and people are coming on weekends and working on weekends. We got a phone call about somebody hearing us Sunday, and nobody knew what was going on. What was the painters trying to get work done? They're prepared to pay overtime. I mean, they they have plans in place. The biggest thing is getting power so that we can make sure we have a consistent climate in the building so that when we lay, we put in cabinetry and flooring and things that, you know, that 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 stays at a particular temperature. Brad today actually helped brainstorm a solution to a power problem because of panels that aren't going to be here in time, something that was not brought up, and and it may be the solution we go with. And I I can't tell you how beneficial it is to have him in that room. You might want to hire him in his second life, you know, he.
Not yet, not yet. Let's finish the project.
We, I I will tell you that the the consistent, the one thing we've talked about, and we have to approve a calendar soon, next month. I may push back to the week after Labor Day, which would be a one-week delay for us. But the message has been consistent that this needs to be open and period, end of story. And I believe, come hell or high water, that, I mean, anything that is physically possible, Fidavia and Crabtree and and the group, because I can't, I can't fault Lobar, they have a sense of urgency too, that if if there is anything possible that they can do, it will be open. If there, if it's not, it's going to be a supply issue, but it is not going to drag on like this field house. I think we're in a position that we're gonna will be ready, you know, and as soon as we get that last electrical panel, it's in, it's ready to go. We, we already have permission to start. As things get a little more winding down, we can move boxes and things in there, furniture and things in there. So, you know, that last piece will be plugging things in to make, to put it simply, there's a more technical way to say that, I'm sure. Plugging things in, turning them on, and and and, you know, being ready to go. So they're working hard at it, I can tell you that. They're working this weekend again, too. Did I miss anything there? Okay. Anything else for Dan?
Good night.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, Adam, four superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, first of all, Happy Valentine's Day as well. Thank you for joining me. I I, Dan, you're not, you don't want to go to Wendy's with me afterwards? Hey, see you. Leanne's going to start it off tonight, give her update first.
Sorry, I just wanted to touch over three things. The first being the monthly reports. If you looked at the categorized monthly expense summary where I kind of break things out, and one of the categories is the healthcare, you'll see that there's a negative number for January. And the reason that is, is we had some really high costs in December. An individual reached the reimbursement limit, and we were given back a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So that hit in January. So if you're looking at the report, it's not a mistake. It's just combined December and January, and you get two normal months, kind of. The other one is on the budget summary. As you can see, revenue and expenses are right where we would anticipate them to be at this point, and things are moving along and rather smoothly in that area. I did want to give you guys a budget update quickly tonight. The preliminary budget was submitted to P. D. At the end of January or after the January meeting. The referendum exception system with P. D. E. Opened last week, and we did submit for the referendum exception to go above the adjusted index like we had voted on in the preliminary budget. And we are waiting to hear back. That is currently in review with P. D. E. Once that comes back, we'll let you know, and Gary and I will put on for a discussion of that item and what we want to do with our budget when we come in May. Some of the department budgets have been, all the department budgets have been submitted. Some of them were level funded, same as last year, similar budget. Some of them are actually less than last year's budget. A few of them were actually above, and Gary and I are going to review those, meet with the department heads and discuss with them. Two of the ones that were over budget from last year, it's kind of expected due to increased costs and a few other things that they want to upgrade, and that's buildings and grounds and technology. The walking trail we're all familiar with, and one of the areas that technology wants to focus on is potentially some additional student devices going into circulation. So Gary and I will review that, and then we'll definitely be bringing that to you guys if we decide that it's something we could see value in. Then the last area I wanted to update you on is the elementary building sales. We did hear back, I think it was last week, from the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, D. M. V. A. They received their independent appraisals back from their appraisals, and they were very similar amounts, fairly close with what our appraiser that we had hired gave to us. So I gave them the, you know, the, we're still looking forward to working with you on this. What is our next step? So what do we do from here? And I let them know that we, as far as we know, we would like the transaction timeline to be completed this summer. And they did get back to me, and I kind of cut and pasted that here so I could get it right. They had the project set up in the Commonwealth tracking system and e-Builder. They take the, it now goes over to the Pennsylvania Department of General Services, and they are going to take the lead to complete the formal acquisition. Though, they're going to get back to us. So we're in the waiting game again to wait for them to get back to us. But the amount that their appraiser came up with for Lickdale Elementary School was two-point-three million, and East Hanover at two-point-one, total combined four-point-four million for the two buildings from them. And if you guys have any interest in having them come in and let you know what they're planning to do with the buildings, once they acquire them, they are more than willing to come in here and give you guys a presentation. So just let Gary or myself know, and we'll set that up. That is all I have for tonight.
Very good. Any questions for Leanne?
What were our appraisals? Again, can you remind us?
I know East Hanovers was in the ones, but at one point.
We were about fifty thousand dollars more on the Lickdale Elementary Building, but significantly less on the East Hanover Elementary Building.
Great.
So we will accept their appraisals. It's beneficial to us.
Thanks.
Okay, and my, I just wanted to hit on a couple of things, and I with Dr. Kuiper and some of the things that have gone on with athletics, but I also wanted to mention this past month, we had two, I thought, pretty neat things that happened in the world of athletics. One was a teacher appreciation night for our programs where the kids invited teachers, and we recognized them before the game. And I just know that a couple of teachers reached out about how meaningful that was to, that kids, you know, nominated them. And I, I don't know how they felt about giving up a Tuesday night to come, to come watch a basketball game, but I know they did, and and I, I think they appreciated the kids' sentiment, because they wrote up something about the teachers and 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 they let them kind of hold their jersey while they stood next to them during the, during for a picture and things like that. So it was kind of neat. And the other thing that I, that really struck me was, there's a student in Lebanon who has a brain tumor, and they're getting treatment, and and it's a situation where the family could use some help. And we did a couple of of different things throughout the course of the week, leading up to a basketball game where they actually attended, and we presented them with a check. All three programs, all three winter programs contributed. I know Director Erdman was, did a thing at, we had a fundraiser for the boys' basketball team, and they did got some donations there, and the people that were in attendance donated over a thousand dollars. The three groups total presented the family with a check for over four thousand dollars. And it was, they brought that family in the middle of the court, and all the teams stood around him and then kind of gathered around them just to, just to support him. And it was, it was a neat experience. As a matter of fact, the boys' team, who wasn't incredibly successful this year, but played hard, they actually gave up their halftime, a lot of their halftime time to prepare to to actually come over and be part of that. So it was just, it was a type of thing that, you know, made, is meaningful to me because it's, it's what we should be about, you know, our community should be about. So those were the things. And then finally, I sent you an email about a legislative breakfast that the IU thirteen is putting on. It's a Monday morning, I think it's a Monday morning. And if you take a look at that and tell me if you're interested, I, one of you did get back to me. I know it's something as a group, we identified a couple of years ago when we did that survey as a weakness. And it's an opportunity to go and talk to our representatives, share some of the things that that are important for us, and 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 they will tell you what's going on as well. But it's just an opportunity to make some connections there. So if you're interested in that, I'd love to take, you know, a couple of board members along and and go down there. It's at Eden Resorts in Lancaster. So take a look at that email and let me know. I have to let them know by the end of the month. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Messinger? Great, thank you. Excellent report. Appreciate it. We will now move to public comment. Public was invited to notify the Secretary of an intent to issue comment this evening by three o'clock this afternoon. There is no public comment this evening, so we will move to the items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. By notice of the President, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or yes. All votes opposed shall be treated with an, stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state I abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as a unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, I may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Dr. Messinger, any comments on the consent agenda?
Nope, everything's the same as last week.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda for this evening, please indicate with a yes or an aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to the discussion agenda. This is item nine.
Yeah, the first three are annual agreements. First one, the Delaware County Interminion Unit, and then two agreements that we have with organizations in case, we don't currently have students in those placements, but in case students need placements or support, the, just annual agreements that we do. Nine point four is our substitute list, and you'll see that there's classified and a professional listed there for you, and then an updated coach list that, and the specific updates are listed there for you as well, as well as the whole coaching breakdown. And that's it for tonight.
Any questions regarding the discussion agenda for this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt items nine point one through nine point five? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving nine point one through nine point five, please indicate with a yes or an aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to item ten. This is the information item.
It's just our L. Levin Valley College student placements for spring.
Okay. Thank you, and then we'll move to our reports. Change Order Committee, Dr. Bucks?
Yeah, we had two change order meetings since we last met to vote. January sixteenth was our larger of the two. One of those that was approved was twenty thousand dollars for additional door access, like the locks, the electronic locks. And then twenty-seven hundred for toilet lock set and electric strikes. Um, and that was, the first was for the elementary school. The second was for the athletic field. Um, yesterday we met for one change order that was $4,500 to add drywall, um, to cover steel framing on a large curtain wall that was, uh, not anticipated.
Right.
And that's it.
Thank you. Excellent report. CTC Director Klein.
I have two things to report. First is we recently had our yearly audit by Sager, Swisher and Company. Um, it was an unmodified opinion. Everything turned out great. If anybody would like to take a look, I'll have it here at the end of the meeting. Um, and we are also in the process of interviewing the administrative director. So that's going on right now, too. That's all I have for the CTC.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Klein, did, did they go over that in February or January, January or February? I, I'm just curious because I feel like ours is late, but it sounds like you guys went over yours at the same time.
We went over it last month.
Okay.
My CTC meeting's next week, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Great. Excellent report. Thank you. IU thirteen, Director Murray.
I have no report this month.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Legislative Liaison, uh, Director England is not here, but I would just again reiterate, um, Dr. Messinger's invitation for the legislative breakfast. Uh, there's also, Director Bucks, thank you, reminded me that there was a, a, uh, there's a court case that has just been through the Commonwealth Court, uh, challenging school funding. Uh, we were just talking about it before the meeting and it's very difficult to, to understand what that means, but it's under appeal. Um, Brooke, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, it's suspected to be under appeal, not officially. Yeah. So we're waiting for that. Um, the quick summary of the eight hundred pages that I have not read is that the school funding formula was found to be inequitable, which I suspect is not a surprise to anyone in the room. Um, and that, uh, I think the view of the judiciary and anyone else who knows anything knows that the legislature is the only one that can solve that problem. It is at least getting attention to the issue. Um, it was like, it was, uh, a piece of litigation that's been going on for, I think, more than three years of, uh, court appearances and motions and incredible briefing. So I don't think it's over. Um, and it is, uh, sort of stating obviously a problem we all know, but hopefully there's a solution at the end of it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Uh, PSBA, Dr. Bucks.
No report this month.
And, and tying those two together, then legislation and PSBA, I would just remind everyone that advocacy day is April twenty-fifth this year, I believe.
April eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Thank you. April eighteenth. That's advocacy day. That's also something that we should consider.
In person and there's also virtual options. Um, and either way, they'll arrange for you to meet with your legislators.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Is there any new business for this evening? Okay. Hearing none. We will move, uh, just notify you of the dates to remember. It's all there in your, in your, uh, agenda for this evening. Anything of note there, Dr. Messinger, that you'd like to point out?
Just start planning to attend the musical in March.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Um, since there's nothing else to bring for the good of the order, uh, I would like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. I hope you get to go home and, and have, have a nice evening with your spouse. Not that this wasn't the most romantic thing we could possibly do. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Indicate with a yes or an I?
Yes.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.